...nation, under guidance, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please have moments of silence in the last three weeks for Avalon residents, some who have been living here and some who have moved off the island during their life. Maui Hernandez, Marilyn Russo, Lynn Eisenhead, and Lupe Menyos. You may sit. I just prepared something the other night. Go ahead, sit down, please. I was thinking about the word "resolution," and so I just came up with a little something. Resolution to any situation is the ability to solve the problems or discuss our differences of opinion with a minimum of hostility, even if the resolution is to agree or disagree. Respecting others' opinion is paramount to learning and understanding the complexity of any issue, how big or how small. I believe our city council is there for you and listening to your concerns. You must speak to be heard, whether at council meetings, meeting us on the street, or in my case, calling me on my phone versus texting and Facebooking. Communication continues to be the key. Thank you. Okay. We need the roll call.
That's me tonight.
Okay.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim McGugan-Cassidy.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here. We have a presentation.
We have Jonathan Foster here from Davis Farr, just giving you a review of our independent audit.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, Council. Appreciate the commendation, pushing me to the front of the agenda, catch the boat on the way back. Also wanted to thank Matt really quickly. We're trying really hard to get caught up on all your audits. We've finally gotten all caught up. Worked really hard and we're going to get ready for your next fiscal year 19 audit here shortly.
Okay. Do we have a little show here?
So I wanted to start with the reports issued. We issued four reports: your basic financial statements, your appropriations limit of agreed upon procedures, which is your GAN limit, your report on internal control over financial reporting, which is the management letter comments, and lastly, the summary of audit results addressed to council. On the financial statements, we did issue a modified opinion, and that is actually due to the hospitals auditors, BDO. They issued a modified opinion based on the exclusion of the drugstore. So the areas of audit focus for '17 and '18, we did work over your pension obligations. There's a slight increase of $1 million over 2017 to 2018, and that is for both your miscellaneous and safety combined. During the fiscal year, there was also a new accounting standard, so you'll see a new liability on your balance sheet for other post-employment benefits. We also did work over your capital assets, confirmed all your long-term debt with external banks, and performed a review of your internal controls, which I wanted to review briefly on the next slide. As a result of the audit, we had seven recommendations. One was over audit adjustments.
You can come sit down if you like, Carl.
Okay. We had some findings over internal controls surrounding your cash disbursements and cash receipting, a recommendation involving your accounting for grant funding, your evaluation of fund deficits, a recommendation for an additional investment policy over your trust for the landfill, and a recommendation for your information technology. I believe Matt has addressed those in the letter and already has started to address some of these recommendations throughout the fiscal year. So some financial statement highlights. I brought up the government's governmental activities and business-type activities balance sheet. There was a slight decrease in your assets of about $1 million year-over-year, which accounted to about a 2% decrease. On the liability side of things, you'll see their net OPEB liability, that is new. That is due to the new accounting standard, so any other post-employment benefits, you have to recognize them in its entirety. So you'll see last year, there's a blank line for 2017, and this year, a new liability of approximately $7.4 million. And just looking at your general fund, budget to actuals, you'll see revenues came in slightly above, I'm sorry, slightly below budget, and that was mostly due to anticipated grant funding for the year. And on the expense side of things, overall, looked pretty healthy. Your expenditures did come in below budget, so no big surprises during the fiscal years '17 and '18. So if anybody had any questions, I can answer as part of the audit where the letters issued.
Counsel, comments? No, but thank you for getting us all caught up, and we're in good standing. Does the community have any questions, or Matt, did you want to make any comments? No? Okay. All right, perfect. Okay.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I guess we'll see you next year. Oh, okay. All righty, we also have another presentation. Carlos, would you please come up to the podium, or there, please?
Good, how are you?
Good. I think most of you know Carlos, right? A young man born and raised on the island, correct?
Yes.
Mike. Mike.
It's not Mike, it's Carlos. Anyway, we just wanted to recognize you. You're an outstanding young man. You're a great example for the young people of Avalon, and so we just wanted to give you the certificate of recognition for Carlos Martinez. On behalf of the City of Avalon, the city council recognizes and honors the achievements of Carlos Martinez, whose lifetime dedication to Avalon youth athletics serves as an inspiration to the entire community. You are a great role model for young people. It would swear up, I do hereby affix my official signature and the official seal of the City of Avalon, California on the 16th of July 2019. So thank you very much, Carlos.
Thank you.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I think being a leader in this community, well, not just being a leader, but being a role model on and off, wherever you are, it's always nice to know that you're trying to be the best person you can be. And I think sometimes, we all get caught up in different things, but I think knowing that you're making an impact in young people's life is always something you want to achieve as a person, and I love doing this, and I know sometimes I struggle with certain things, but I always try to overcome it because, I mean, in life, I've overcome so many things, so overcoming little obstacles is only part of the journey. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. City manager, any announcements or written communications?
Well, I have kind of a combination of both. I was asked to read into the record the letter from Councilmember Hernandez that was given to me last July 16th. So it says, "Dear Denise, it is with strong feelings of regret, I find that for personal reasons, I must submit this letter of resignation as a member of the city council effective immediately. I thank you for your support over the years in my role, and I wish you, the mayor, and the council members, every success as they move forward. Sincerely, Richard J. Hernandez," Councilmember.
Thank you. And that's that. Okay, department head reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, seven items to update you on. Update on Mole Phase 1, contract for the mole is mobilizing the week of the 19th. Next week, staff will be out working with the mole businesses on parking during the project and where they need to be. Pebley Beach Road lift station, the contractor is procuring materials right now, so that's Jordal Construction. Ten of the schedule has demolition starting at the end of August, when those materials are on hand. Seawall at South Beach and the steps, as you've noticed, that now we've closed that very south-end step, and that's because it finally separated from the seawall. It was being further undermined, so it has pulled away, so it's not in safe condition, and they will be replaced with the seawall repair that will occur in the fall. But the critical path in that is the permitting with the Coastal Commission. Pebley Beach Road revetment, so the rock revetment that we have funds from OESON, staff and our on-call engineer, ESG, are continuing to work to develop the revetment repair contract documents and the permits for a project that will also be completed this fall. Kathryn Saltwater Booster Station, so staff is continuing to explore alternatives for the leaks on the saltwater intake pipe. There's two joints that are leaking, and it makes it lose vacuum. We had one contractor to, out here, the possibility of lining the pipe, and he was found it was, the pipe was too large, 12-inch diameter for his machine, so we're going with a different solution, and likely that's bringing Eagle Lift back out here to seal with a foam. So I'm talking to them right now and seeing what the cost would be for that. We have finalized a deal on the dump truck, so on the equipment that we said that we were going to purchase. So we found a 2015 with about 44,000 miles. It's in excellent condition, so both public works staff and mechanics went over there and went all the way through it and made sure that it was high-quality for us, and the price for that was $56,000, and it should be here any day, delivered on the island. So you'll see a new truck to us. And the Five Corners environmental document, the comment period for the mitigated neck deck is complete and has closed, and the project is scheduled for the August Planning Commission meeting. And one more, the crosswalks, the yellow crosswalks, in preparation for school, they'll be repainted within this next two weeks. Any questions?
Questions? Comments?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Amanda Cook for the Planning Department. A couple of pieces of exciting information. We are planning on issuing the certificate of occupancy for the Atwater on Friday, barring any really unexpected pickups, and we are also expecting to be issuing a COO for the Zane Gray within the next two to three weeks, barring anything unexpected. So it's really exciting to see those two historic properties come back online. I haven't had an opportunity to tour the Zane Gray, but I got a chance to go through the Atwater, and it's really beautiful. They've really done a lovely job with that property. So, do you have any questions for me?
I don't know if, maybe not today, but in the future, now that John Gilbert is on full-time, if we could have an update on the residential inspection program.
Yes, John has helped us formulate a much simpler checklist, so we should be able to come back to you possibly in September if there's room on the agendas, and we could bring that back to you.
Great.
Any other questions?
Counsel? Good? Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. Harvard Masters Report. July started off a little slow, as we all know, although we finished about 20 votes more this year than we did in 2018. So, start of August 1st, like somebody flipped a switch, and, I mean, the votes came, and they came, and they came. I'd like to take a little opportunity to kind of do a shout-out to our emergency services personnel, the fire department, the Harvard Department, the Baywatch Avalon County Fire. We had an incident on July 24th, about 11:55 hours. Sheriff's Dispatch reported a diver in distress at the stairs at the dive park. Avalon Harbor Patrol Officers Michael Brooks, Trainee Juan Moreno responded to the rescue dock while Patrol Officer Paul Sanchez responded to the dive park in the Bywater. Upon arriving at the dive park stairs, Patrol Officer Brooks observed a female citizen doing CPR on a diver. Officer Brooks opened up his AED and placed it on the chest of the diver and pushed analyze. The AED stated that "no shock advised, continue CPR." Continued CPR was continued. Mike went to the airway and started managing the airway. Dave Long came in, Captain Long came in, started CPR, relieving the young lady who was a surgical nurse doing citizen CPR. Dave Long got a couple of reps in, and then Paul Sanchez came onboard, and he started doing CPR. And then after about a minute or so of CPR, all of a sudden, the guy took a breath, opened his eyes, and started staring at us. So, it was miraculous. It's, I mean, if you had ever done that? Exactly. I mean, it's, in our game, in our environment, we don't always get to walk away feeling good about ourselves, but each one of my patrol officers got a letter of commendation. I reached out to Chief Krug and his officers and the Baywatch, and, I mean, it was, it was really, really amazing to watch. So, it, they flew the guy, the guy off to Ronald Reagan, and last I heard, he's doing fine. So, it was one for the good guys, so.
That is wonderful.
Yeah. My hat's off to my crew and everybody else.
Yes, and we appreciate their efforts, too. Thank you very much. It's nice to hear.
Any questions? Okay.
Good afternoon. Captain John Hocking, LA County Sheriff's Department. Tonight, it's the first Tuesday of August, is called National Night Out, and basically what that is, is where different communities come out and they meet with law enforcement and other first responders, and they just take back the community from areas that there is high crime. Here in Avalon, we don't have high crime, but it's always good to get crime prevention information. So we have a booth set up down on Sumner and Crescent on Front Street, and we have two or three sheriff volunteers along with a couple deputies, and they're passing out crime prevention information to the community. Or if the community just wants to come up and talk to a deputy about a problem in their neighborhood, if they've ever had a question. Recruitment for the LA County Sheriff's Department is real big right now, and we, I get people all the time asking me, "Avalon residents, hey, how old do I have to be? Where can I go?" And we send everybody to lasd.org, the website, and that has all the information you need about being a deputy sheriff. I'd also like to talk about the active shooters that we've had this week. I can tell you that the Sheriff's Department, Avalon Station, we are prepared for active shooters. We have the equipment, we have the weapons, we train regularly. Three weeks ago, we trained with Avalon City Fire and Avalon County Fire on active shooter situations, and we basically, the training consists of going through a structure where there was imaginary victims injured, and the deputies provided security for the firefighters and the paramedics while they went in and pulled the victims out of the hostile environment where there was a shooting taking place. So we work with the school regularly, the fire department, all the first responders, and we will continue to do that to make sure that Avalon's a safe place for an active shooter situation, to try to prevent it from happening in the first place, but if it does happen, then we would be able to get in there and be able to shut it down very quickly.
Great. And with that, I'm assuming the hospital is onboard. I mean, if you have 40 people injured and/or murdered at one time, that we've got protocol for that, I'm assuming. Yes, sir. Jason shakes his head. Okay, good, thank you.
There is protocol for that. We deal with the hospital personnel very frequently, and I can tell you, we might be on our own for a short period of time, but I have the world rolling. They are all coming, and within 30 minutes to an hour, we will have so many people here to assist us that, but as you know, most of the shootings occur very quickly, within a minute or two, so it's up to us to get in, train well, be prepared, get in there, and eliminate the threat. Stop the threat so people can't get injured. Anybody have any questions for me?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there, is there any type of training that we could, you specifically, could put on for members of the community or businesses or management teams? I mean, obviously, in a situation, you want to try to keep as many people safe and whatnot. Is there any kind of training that we could put together for members of the community?
Yeah, that's a great idea. I do have a class that I put on, and it is basically a two-hour class. I've put it on last year for all the Avalon City employees. I've also put it on for Southern California Edison. They heard about it and asked me to put it on, and if you would like, I could put it on for the business owners, business community, and then we could even move to the public after that. I would have no problem doing that at all.
I think, now that you just talked about that, I think we did that.
You did that.
Yeah, that was for Dan. That was Dan's first day up against me. That, okay, so if there's consensus from council, I'd love to move forward, maybe work with you on putting together something for members of our community as well.
Yes, ma'am. That sounds great. I'd love to do it, and it's very informative. It really opens your eyes to what, how bad these active shooter situations are, and what you should do to try to protect yourself in case you're involved in one. And it could happen, you could be over on the mainland at a mall, and it could happen, and this information is good for anywhere, wherever you're at.
Because you had, there was a video, too, remember, a very graphic video that you showed?
Yes, ma'am. That's part of the training, too. It's, on a side note, our, the personnel from the Sheriff's Department that made that video, they just received an award for it because they said it was so informative, and basically, it saves people's lives. So, yes, I'd love to do that, and I can talk to you about that. We can come up with a date, and then we can put it out, advertise it, and get everybody here.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City staff. Mike Krug, Avalon Fire Chief. Let me just follow up on the mayor's question. The term you're looking for is a mass casualty incident. So regardless of how people are injured, any number of patients, it overwhelms local resources. We train for that with the hospital and other first responders to triage people here, treat who we can here, and ship out who needs to, and get more resources here.
Great, thank you.
Just a couple of things, very quickly. I've received some phone calls over the past few weeks. Avalon, like a lot of cities in California, is paying the price for the devastating wildfire season, and also, because we're one of about 200 communities declared a very high fire hazard severity zone by the state, people have been calling with questions about their insurance. There's been rates that have been raised, there's been policies that have been canceled. I don't have any ability to change any of that. It kind of is what it is. But that doesn't mean that people can't still do what they can around their property to mitigate wildfire danger. There's also been some phone calls. There's some changes coming with regards to hard phone lines. Hard phone lines are eventually going to go away, so there's been some calls about people that are having new alarm panel systems installed. They're going to be wireless. So that's fine, and that's approved by fire code, but people are moving away from hardline fire alarm systems?
That doesn't really help us here.
Well, they...
I mean, not something, not a frustration towards you, but, I mean, our system is tapped already, so how are we expected to go wireless?
I think what they're, what they're looking at is a redundant system, that there's a redundant system. There's a hardline, there's a wireless connection, there's a battery backup, and there's redundancy, so if, if, if all four levels of that redundancy fail, then it kind of is what it is. But you'd have to have multiple failures. You'd have to have a failure of power, you'd have to have a failure of the battery, you'd have to have a failure of the cell service, and you'd have to have a failure of the phone line. So if we got to that point, there's not much more we can do beyond that. So it's not that they're looking to take anything away, or it's just another level of redundancy.
Got it. Okay, thanks for that.
And then lastly, I just wanted to recognize some of my personnel, or all of my personnel, that August, we have three years of safe work. So what that means for us is we have three years without a lost time accident. So that's, that's a testament to our staff and putting safety first, and we belong to a program that calls everybody, it's called "Everyone Goes Home," and it's just putting safety at the forefront, that everyone goes home, hopefully in the same condition they came to work in. So with that, unless you have any questions for me.
Counsel, we're good? Thank you very much, Chief.
Matt Baker, speaking on behalf of the Finance Department. Just a real quick, our TOT audit was recently wrapped up. All of the businesses that were selected as part of that audit should have received a letter either late last week or sometime this week. I want to thank them for their cooperation with the auditors, and happy to report that while there weren't too many findings, we should be able to recover the cost of it. It is, and it's important that we do these audits on a periodic basis, just so we make sure everyone knows we are looking and we are paying attention. The only other thing is, as Jonathan mentioned, we're already working on the '19 audit, or at least preparing for them to come out and work on that, with the ultimate goal to have the '19 audit done while we're still in calendar year '19. So we're fiscal year '20 now, but our goal's by Christmas to have the '19 financials completed, so.
That's wonderful.
Any other questions?
Oh, great, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As we move into August, some things we've got coming up with the Recreation Department. Tomorrow night, the 7th, Wonder Park, Movies on the Beach Program and How to Train Your Dragon on the 21st, joint venture with Choices. So Wednesday night, starting about 8 o'clock, tomorrow night, Wonder Park, and then the 21st, How to Train Your Dragon, be the last of the series. Through August, we'll continue the Beach Bingo Program on South Beach from 6 to 7, with the last date being the 29th. Our first fishing derby will continue through the 21st, Wednesday mornings from 7 to 9 in the mornings. We have instilled a local edition concert series this year. We've got two more concerts, one in August, and then one will be on the 1st of September. The one in August will be August 17th with Undercover out of the Fuel Dock, both of those being out of the Fuel Dock, but out of the Fuel Dock. And that same evening, and Jim may be touching on this with the chamber, but as part of their concert series, they'll have Woodstock on Wrigley Stage, so on the 17th at about 7 o'clock. Our Outrigger Program has got two races that we're going to be representing in August. First one will be this Saturday, the 10th, it'll be at Dana Point. We're taking two co-ed crews out. We've done fairly well in the co-ed division, we're looking to do the same this one. And then in Oceanside on the 24th would be the second race for the nine-man season. And then lastly, we're just started registrations, we'll be putting together our activity guide for fall, and then registrations, we're taking for our youth soccer program in September, and our tumbling and cheer program in September. So with that, any questions?
At the next council meeting, could we have an update on our vending program?
Certainly.
Okay. Because I know you've been working on that, that's been moving.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, I guess that's it for departments. City manager report?
The Department of Toxic Substance Control did send out that survey and mailer of information, and they had a public hearing last Tuesday, and unfortunately, no one showed up to ask any questions or to give any further information, but I will be posting a flyer that they sent to us, and it will have contact information for any technical questions or community concerns. The dates that they will be doing work is started yesterday, August 5th, through August 23rd, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
All right.
I did receive some information from the LA County Registered Recorders Office, just giving us an update that the cost estimates for our March 2020 election have been delayed, and that they hope to get all that information in there, hopefully, within the next couple weeks, and that will have that election cost... of weeks, and that will have that election cost estimate calculator that was last put in in 2017. So they apologize for any inconvenience, and they thank the council and city managers and city clerks for their patience. And then I wanted to make sure that the public knows that this Friday, August 9th, from 10:00 to 12:00, we will be having a study session for parking on the flats and Lower Terrace Road and, and that area. We'll be addressing as much as we possibly can in those two hours. And hopefully council will provide some direction, and we'll bring it back formally at a next council meeting.
Great.
And the other thing is that Audra couldn't be here this tonight, but she wanted to make sure the public knew that on August 14th, we'll have another sign up for the Dial-A-Ride Program, and that will be in front of Blue Water there by the booth that we have, and that's from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The last time we had it, it was beneficial, so we hope to get some more riders to sign up, and to make sure that the public knows that Dial-A-Ride is available till 7:30 p.m.
Great, thank you very much. City attorney?
Yeah, just related to the item that Ms. Ratty indicated on the Department of Toxic Controls, we did receive a letter today that we will be, we will be reimbursed attorney fees for the last six months or so regarding to, regarding some of that work that, that we did. So the city will get a check back, probably about 50,000 or 60,000 bucks.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. Okay, council member reports?
I just have one thing. I just want, for people that didn't know, we had a special council meeting on July 18th regarding revenue generating ideas. It went really well. I thought there was a lot of good ideas that came out of that meeting. One thing that we're going to be looking at is special events that might be longer in duration, things that haven't been brought to the island before, and maybe over a longer period of time. There's actually an item on the consent calendar tonight to put a committee together to explore that more. So if you hadn't seen that, it would be online to watch that meeting. That's all.
I attended the L.A. County Division of the League of California Cities Installation Dinner on Thursday in beautiful Belleflore. It was kind of a ceremonial thing, wasn't a lot of information passed out.
I'll be attending the Gateway Cities Council of Government Meeting tomorrow. Had another item, and I just, I'm sorry, it just slipped my mind. Sorry.
Well, starting if it comes to you.
Okay, sorry.
I went to the SCAG meeting, Southern California, Southern California Association of Government Meetings. It was all about the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, and I have passed on the information to our Assistant City Manager. They're wanting input by September 3rd on three formulas for calculating the arena numbers, and so we've kind of turned that over to him. The other thing, I'm a little preoccupied this evening, but, so in the invocation, again, and we were talking about the active shooter, it is tragic that 37 people lost their lives and many, many more injured by the hand of three Americans. And so our thoughts and sympathies are, go to the families in those living in Ohio, Gilroy, California, and Texas. Did you come up for the other one?
I did. I just wanted to make it aware that I would be absent at the next city council meeting, so would ask that any appointments to committees or whatnot be postponed until further council meeting.
Till the next one, September? Okay.
We'll just appoint you to all the committees.
Just, no.
Okay, Oral Communications. This is an opportunity for people from the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken. I see Debbie Wright.
Hi, Debbie Wright at 210 Descanto.
You may want to pull the mic down just a tad.
There you go. I would like to request regarding the meeting on August 9th for parking in the flats, if for any reason that meeting gets canceled, that it automatically goes on to the agenda at city council, at the next city council meeting.
Okay.
Okay. And then I had a question for you. I wanted to know if you could clarify for me the city's regulations regarding truck routes on the flats?
Regarding what?
Truck routes on the flats.
Oh, right.
Could you clarify for me? I think somebody from city staff needs to make that clarification.
I believe that it comes up Clarissa to Beacon Street and goes across Beacon, and then goes up Beacon and down Metropole.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking is, in the last two weeks, particularly this week, every single day, large trucks from the island company have been going down Lower Descanto. So I just, that's why I want a clarification, because I thought it was Clarissa, but with all the trucks going down Descanto now, I wasn't sure if that had changed.
Okay, we'll send a letter or notify the island company.
Okay, thank you.
I noticed similar things on, I've mentioned to Denise, on Upper Descanto as well with the big, with cement trucks and those kinds of things also going all the way up. So, yeah, they do need to be reminded occasionally. And next?
I was here a month ago and watched the procedure that, that the council used in, in, in collecting a, the situation where they are, where Steve was able to make it to the council. And the question I have is, is going to be toward the city attorney. Do we have that memo in somewhere? Is it there around the memo we were talking about?
What memo?
I don't know what memo we're talking about.
You don't know?
Which memo?
Huh?
Which memo?
Well, there was a memo, okay? So if you don't know it, then we'll, we'll make a request for it. And, and the other thing, that it looked like a fiasco, you know, it just, there wasn't enough people in here to, to actually do a selection of a city councilman. There just doesn't, didn't look like there was that many. I was sitting here watching it. And so I, I think that the memo I talked about, we'll, we'll talk about it, so, because it may not be available. And so I'm, I'm here for Richard because Richard has been an outstanding person for many, many, many years with the community, and I think the way it was handled wasn't good, okay? That's just my opinion, and so maybe when we get together with the city attorney, we can talk about that memo. Anyway, other than that, that's it. This will probably be the last time I get up here, and, and I'm going to, we're going to, we're going to make sure that we, we take a good, hard look at what happened, okay? So, and I'm watching you over there, like, what, anyway, the, I need, need to talk to you about the, the, that, that fiasco that I saw. Did you look at that? Is that legal that, that you saw of the people making the selection? Was that legal?
If the question is, was the appointment of Steve Hayes legal as a councilperson, the answer is yes.
Yes.
It was, huh? Okay.
So let me ask you a question. Are you going to be here tomorrow, Scott?
Yeah, I'll be here tomorrow. I have a meeting, I have a meeting at 9:30, so I can be, meet before 9:30, or I have a window from 1:15 to 1:45.
Okay, so if you'd like to meet with him, Ralph, you can give him a call tomorrow, and he'll be available.
1:15 to 1:45?
Yeah, I mean, I've got, I've got meetings.
Were you going to be here?
Yeah, in City Hall.
Okay.
Or before 9:30, from like 8:30 to 9:30.
Good deal. All right.
Do you know which one you will be, so he can kind of plan?
I'm sorry?
Are you, are you an early riser? I mean, is 8:30 good for you, or is that 1:15 better?
I don't care, it doesn't matter.
You want, do you want us to decide now, so then the phones won't have to go back and forth?
I'll be in my office regardless.
Okay.
All right.
All righty, trying to make it simple.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jim Lujahan from Catalina Island Chamber and Visitors Bureau. I just wanted to remind the members of the public who may not be aware, we'll be joining with the mayor to host a ribbon cutting for one of our many new businesses, Endemic Fish House, on this coming Friday at 5:30 p.m. So we welcome all members of the community to join us for that. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Rock Osland, 318 Whitley. Quick sidebar over and above what I brought here to talk about. Counsel, and JJ, the diver that you talked about earlier, he was a guest of my hotel. He personally made a phone call the next morning to request that we pack up all his stuff and ship it to him, so he was good enough to talk on the phone to us.
That was nice.
Now back to other stuff here. I had to come up today to talk for my couple of minutes of theme here on your efforts to secure more funds because of deficits. And I just have to ask some questions and point out some things that I want to make sure that all of you, and when I say all of you, that means seated and former council members, and employed and former city staff and department heads. And when I say we, I mean everyone behind me and all the taxpayers in town. So when we start looking at, you know, you guys need more funds to do things, and you're going to be looking at more revenue streams, but also, like the timer that was brought in here a while back, my little multi-colored Christmas tree tower thing, I mean, really, Edison gave away hundreds of three-minute egg timers. We could have put one up here at the timer, you know, as a timer for people, things of that nature. I'm just kind of wondering, and I don't need numbers, and it's rhetorical question, what does it cost us taxpayers in Avalon to pen all of these feel-good, ban-the-plastic laws that we've got in our town now, only to have more and more plastic caution tape and more and more polyester sandbags rotting away in the weather, washing into our oceans? Kind of going, we're, we're not, we're not walking in the same direction here all the How much money has gone uncollected in rent at the Fuel Dock because council members thought that'd be a good idea to go out after extra money instead of take the bid from a contractor that had been in that site for years and provided living wages to several families in this town? I can tell you the answer. I talked to Russ. He figures that by now, he would have spent about a quarter million dollars in rent and fees and overrides to the city since he would have been there. Sounds like a number that's being tried to raise by raising taxes. So I admire, I admire the fact that you guys want to have an item agenda here for an ad hoc committee to put together some way of looking at new revenue streams, but I can't, in all good consciousness, back the two council members are going to be on that ad hoc committee. I think it needs to be a citizen ad hoc committee. I think maybe a council member seated to be there to answer questions of protocol, and a city employee, hopefully at least a department head to do the same, and let the citizens who are going to pay these bills be the people that come up with these ideas and try and shepherd them. I haven't seen any evidence that there's really great fiduciary responsibilities and duties right now because you're looking for more money. Appropriate that that's up there. I still think that city has to, got to get out of the landlord business, get a proper fee for 206 Whitley, get it into the hands of a proper developer for the tax and fee structure. I've done some of the math, the tax, the property taxes and fee structures would be much more money into the city coffers than you guys had ever collected in rent and subsidized housing on a piece of property that has absolutely no business being subsidized. Subsidized rent in a property that has better views and a better location than most of the people working their tails off in this town can afford. The other problem is, is in a market that has 100% occupancy in full-time housing, what's the city been able to do for occupancy at 206 Whitley since they've owned it? I think it's around 25 or 30%. I think you guys need to get rid of that, get it to a developer that can make the money, some money on a long-term basis, paying the city the fees it needs. I don't know how much money was wasted on the E-Bus items for the Garibaldi bus system. Nice idea. I'm sure that there was some money sent back to the city from the manufacturer, but I just want to remind the city that that E-Bus setup, you guys were warned about it, did it anyway, didn't work. I hope that the city was made whole, but I doubt it based on how many hours city staff had to work on it and how much money was sent to the charging station and the parking over here. It's been a lot of money spent on barricades to keep guests away from things that need to be fixed. I was happy to hear at least some of it's going to be fixed. So much money's been spent on barricades, but I think at least a few of the items should have been able to have been fixed just by that expense.
And Rock, I'm, I'm going to interrupt you because it's been three minutes, but we're, the ad hoc committee is on the agenda today, and we're going to be pulling it off to chat about, and I think your comments are very well made, and it sounds like you might be somebody who wants to sit on that committee.
If my phone rings, I'm, I, I will answer. I don't know if I can commit to it properly.
Well, I don't know how much time it will...
Business people like me might be the ones to do it. And I've pretty well timed myself on my sheet, and I just got to the end of it. So I think the city needs to concentrate on collecting the money it was supposed to be collecting, rather than looking for more money to bring in first.
Your comments are very well taken. Thank you.
Hello there, Paul Virchell, Avalon Library. First, a word of apology. My library has been very hot. If there's an air conditioner, it does not work that well, but they have brought in ceiling fans. I wish you could see them. I've got beautiful ceiling fans that reduces the temperature about five degrees, pretty good. I'm going to stay open until my eyes coffee boils, so we'll have lots of services for you. I wanted to report that we had 65 kids who signed up for our Summer Discovery Program, which is now ending, we're coming to the end of it. If you have summer reading cards that you still need to redeem your prizes for, come on in, we're good for that through the month. I also had a fabulous chess club meeting with Steve from, from the church, who is now running our chess club, really, really popular. We had like six kids all doing the chess. It was really, really a good, that's a good program. We've got a good program coming up. I also wanted to put a plug in for our incredibly generous Friends of Avalon Libraries Ukulele classes, which are continuing every Wednesday in People's Park. We've got ukuleles to give you. Come on in, come on in, Madam America, and grab a ukulele, and we'll, we'll get you strumming. Come on in. We're going to be doing that as long as people are interested in it, and if like three or four people get together and say we want something a little formal, I believe we're going to get a teacher for you. So we want to make this ukulele thing work. In terms of programs coming up, I wanted to thank the museum. Because my library's so warm, I don't like having a lot of people there, so they very graciously allowed me to use the atrium of the museum, and last week, we had a fabulous performance of a one-man play about Edgar Allan Poe, and he was like in this black thing, looking all creepy, and it's like Catalina sun on him. It was so funny. This Thursday, we're going to have a music concert with a performer by the name of Craig Newton, very fabulous, music from around the world. Coming up on Tuesday, the 13th, I'm going to have a party, an ice cream, end of the Summer Discovery Program party. Thanks again to the friends, they'll be supplying the ice cream surprise. That's coming up. We're continuing our really successful Spanish-English language conversation group. It's really taking off. I'm surprised at how popular it is, but they get together and we talk English for an hour. It works really well. Chess club I've done. Chuck Liddell's Talk coming up on Tuesday, August 20th. Everything you wanted to know about Catalina but didn't know, he's fabulous. That's a fabulous... That's a fabulous show. Got lots of stuff planned for September. Hopefully, it'll get a little cooler in my little room, but if not, I'm going to be there anyway. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, 10 seconds left. That was really good. You must have practiced.
I always love his report. Paula Patterson, 221 Whitley. And I came here, I wanted to ask, I want some clarification because sometimes rumors get going in town, and I thought between perhaps Jim or some of the council members that have been involved in this, I keep hearing that we can expect another cruise ship in the next fall for the months of July, August, and September on Wednesdays. And I don't know if this is true, but I just don't know if that ever comes up for discussion within the public or if that just happens. So, before I get all revved up about that kind of stuff, I just, I would like to know. Is that on, does anybody know, is that happening? Or Jim, can anybody, anybody?
I can say I've been fairly involved and I have heard not one stitch of evidence or conversation to that fact.
See, I like to ask.
That's just from one, I know you were directing that partially, those of us that are involved, but...
Well, partially, but then I was hearing this and I thought, well, is this going to, is this something that's on the table? But I was just thinking, that can't happen without the public having a say. I mean, not having a say, but at least having input about that. So, I just thought I'd bring, because that, that we can stop a lot of hearsay, we can stop a lot of hysteria.
I think both Jim and JJ are going to come up behind you and make a comment.
Awesome.
There has been some emails going back and forth regarding a cruise ship line coming in here on Wednesday, starting in 2021. They're proposing to come in from July through September, and then they're gone for the winter in, I want to say Australia. Far as I know, there's nothing firm completed, other than emails going back and forth. And Jim and myself and Denise and Dave Kree have been talking about it and waiting to hear what their final option, what they want to do, but nothing is set in stone yet, as far as I know.
Well, and should that come before the city council for some kind of decision?
Absolutely.
Or is that something that the Harvard Department and the Chamber of Commerce can say, we'll bring it in on a Wednesday?
Under your, I mean, you don't have, unless, well, I think they're exempt from a waterside permit, but I think the only issues you have is to deal with the issues of the warpage fees and making allowances to encourage ships to come. That's what you've done in the past. I'm not aware of any action that the council has taken or can take with respect to certain days that they come in.
Okay. Well, and impacts and that kind of thing and the ability to accommodate, I imagine, I hope you all will keep a surprise to what's going on, the size of the vessel and what they're thinking and when they're thinking.
Well, currently, right now, I mean, there are just literally three or four emails started this week. So, there, you know, there's a lot of figuring out what needs to be done, how it needs to get done, and what days. Or if it can get done.
That's, I guess, the other question.
Again, it's, it's the typical, it's really early in the stages, so.
Okay.
Far, at least from my standpoint of it.
Okay.
I don't know what Jim wants to do.
Go ahead, Jim.
I would just add that the reason the meeting convened that JJ referenced with the city manager and Dave Kree and myself was because a ship's agent, not the cruise line, but a third-party ship's agent, made the initial contact, which is fairly early in the pipeline generally. That's shopping to build an itinerary around multiple ports, and the initial request was for days in the summer that raised concern, frankly, on all of our parts, that we could not feasibly absorb that impact. So, we got together to look at all of that and also talked with one of the major cross-channel carriers about impacts and responded accordingly, that the original request for dates were not going to be feasible. And where it lies right now for finalizing, not yet finalized, is, as JJ said, for a possible Wednesday visit. Possible still being the key term there. I think what may have gotten, I think what's out in the community is maybe not even, because of this very recent event, I think it's something that preceded that, where we were visited by another cruise line in follow-up to a conference that we went to. We're still under a non-disclosure. They don't want their name out there, and we're kind of in a limbo on whether or not they're going to come back with a proposal or not. We've answered the questions they've asked. And just to put again on the record, the Chamber of Commerce acts in a liaison fashion. We do not have the authority to make those agreements. That rests squarely with the city. The harbor's your property and your domain. We're just a facilitator of the conversations.
I appreciate it. And Ole, were you involved in any of that?
Not in the most recent one.
Okay. But the previous one he was talking about?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Because we don't seem to get those reports.
We have nothing firm. We got together for one meeting from the email giving us some dates. We definitely ruled out, there was never going to be like a Saturday ever during our summer months. We weighed, if they even came in on one day a week, where would we put them? That's why we consulted with the Express and that this is all preliminary and we definitely would be keeping counsel abreast, particularly at a council meeting, so you would know what was going on. And as, when an email comes and it's labeled as its confidential information, it's not something that I talk about. So, where all that came out, I have no idea. I apologize if the council feels blindsided by this, but it is not, it's so preliminary. We don't even know what's going to happen. It's in 2021. There you have it.
Okay. I appreciate that. No, I had heard the rumor as well, so I called Jim and got the 401 from him, but it, go ahead. All right. Thank you for bringing that up. Leslie?
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. I would like to ask about cell service in Avalon. I'm still an AT&amp;T customer. I've been on the phone with customer service and technical assistance so many days I can't even tell you. And the last thing they said to me was that our 3G tower in Avalon does have 4G capacity now. I have not noticed any difference, but they also suggested, and I don't know if the city has reached out to them about the service, but I feel like we're jeopardizing our safety in town. I'm hearing that Verizon is being somewhat compromised on cruise ship days as well, just from people who have Verizon. So, I'm very concerned. Fortunately, we still have a landline. Many people don't, and I wonder if in an emergency, with the current status of cell service, we would really be in a bind here. So, I'm asking the city if there's any way you can reach out to AT&amp;T to ask them to upgrade the service. I know it's a very complicated thing. They have to put in another tower. I don't quite know all the details, but I really feel we need some powerful energy going toward this problem.
Thank you. That was discussed at the last council meeting, and Michael Palmer, Assistant City Manager, can respond to that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to just briefly update for those who might not have seen it?
So, we did submit a letter to the CPUC, a certified letter, basically asking, outlining the issues that we've had, particularly with AT&amp;T. And we asked for a sit-down meeting with CPUC staff as well as with AT&amp;T. This was dropped off or delivered on the 22nd of July. They typically take quite some time to respond back. I say usually four to five weeks seems to be about what I'm hearing. We're actively in communication with BBNK about next steps. So, if we don't hear a response back, we already have contingencies built in on how we can continue to move forward and get additional entities and additional agencies involved in order to come to some sort of remediation. And I'd be more than happy to sit with you after the meeting and chat with any additional concerns on that, but it is something that we're addressing and we're actively monitoring at this time.
Okay. Thanks for the update, Michael.
Yeah.
Yes.
Diane Stone, Catalina Island Humane Society. I'm here, along with others, with a request to the city council. As you are all painfully aware, with the death of Pam Albers, we lost not just an outstanding council member, but an outstanding citizen of Avalon. Pam loved this island and devoted much of her adult life, professional career, and vast expertise in making this island a better place. It was her home. We are here this evening to ask the council to please consider placing this small memorial in her honor here at City Hall. We understand the complication of a potential precedent, which I think is a good precedent, for other dedicated employees or elected officials, but we truly feel that Pam was exceptional and deserves to be memorialized for her dedication and purity of her intent in serving Avalon. She had no personal agenda save for the long-term best interest of all the citizens and well-being of this island. Not only did Pam dedicate her efforts in her life to Sata Catalina Island, but her largest in death is represented by the organizations attending this evening, citing them as beneficiaries in her estate. Her love for this island will continue despite the loss of her physical presence. We should also mention that no physical burden will be borne by the city as the cost of the memorial and installation has been collected by donation and fundraising efforts. We're only asking that this discreet memorial be placed at City Hall, where she devoted so much of her life. Thank you for your consideration and look forward with hope to your direction.
I just have, my printer's terrible, so if you...
Whoa!
Oops. I put, it's just, it's just pretty much, you get the scope of what this is. It's teeny. And we wanted to do a tree copy because there's been concern about an ironwood perhaps growing into redwood in no time. So, it's just small, and I put the dimensions on the bottom, and if there's any way that we could work this out as well.
Because it's already embedded in the stone, correct?
It isn't yet, but...
But that's what you wanted to put it in?
That's what we're thinking. It's facetious.
Well, how should we go about this?
Well, you can't take any action tonight.
Right.
So, you can direct staff to look into this and come back either with a report or agendize it for the next meeting for actually dedicating city space to that.
Okay. Is that good? Did you want to say something else, Ernie?
Yeah. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Mayor. Ernie Rodriguez, 128 Beadle. I want to underscore what was said in the letter, and if you're going to set a precedent, Pam's a pretty high-bar precedent to set. When I, and a couple of little anecdotes. When I went to, when she was in the hospital and I went in to see her, I walked in and she was on her computer doing city business on her deathbed. So, she was saying, I'm getting out of here, and, I mean, she was continually looking at how to serve this community. That is just, it's the behind-the-scenes thing that you don't see. And the other thing is, we are a beneficiary of her estate nature in the classroom, and as you know, she did the legal work for the nonprofit that allowed us to put a ceiling in the Catalina Kid Ventures. And I want to share with you a story of, and it comes down to Pam's legacy. She made it happen. But I was in the market the other day, and a mother and her young daughter approached me, and she just said, she looked down at her daughter and she goes, "Go ahead, tell them." And this sweet-looking lady, she goes, "I want to say thank you for the tree." She goes, "We love it." That's Pam's legacy. She made it happen.
Thank you. Well, do we want to agendize or do we want to, agendize or just maybe meet individually with like the city manager and chat about this? Or if there's... I guess, the one thing would be if, you know, if there's a consensus about wanting to move forward to put it somewhere at City Hall and then just working out the details, or if we want to say, we don't want to start this precedent and just say, go find some, and I'm not saying that, I'm being facetious, or just find somewhere else to put it. So...
I'd feel more comfortable in compliance with the Brand Act, which Pam always instructed me to do, to do it at a meeting if the council's going to be involved in a decision. Otherwise, the staff can come back with options. Again, it's your prerogative.
Well, I...
Bring it back for an agenda item.
But it's ridiculous. It's going to have to take so much time to discuss, I guess.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know, if there's, if we were in consensus that it should be somewhere around City Hall, do we leave it to the discretion of City Hall to decide where? Or do we say, no, we don't want anything at City Hall by consensus and find another place for it? Or we say, take your plaque and find your own place? And you know me, I'm not meaning to sound so harsh, but those are like the three options I see. So...
I have consensus to move forward to find a location.
At City Hall or somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay. Me too.
So, if that means staff needs to bring it back with suggestions or whatnot for an agenda item, that's my...
Yeah. I mean, we have consensus to put it somewhere at City Hall? Okay.
Or it could be a report out that we found a location?
Yes.
And not have an item?
Right.
I mean, that way we're not deciding?
We don't need to believe it.
We're consensing to put it on the agenda. Oh, good.
Technically, we're going to probably be, if there's a place in City Hall, we're going to put it. If the city can do it, you don't need action.
Okay.
So...
It's getting closer, right? I mean, this is supposed to sound good. Okay? All righty. And that's nice of all of you to come out. Next time, you can come out in force like this for a dog park. Sorry, Rob. All righty. Okay, so where are we? Oh, more oral communication. Jason, you don't have anything to tell us? Okay. When are you going to open up the...
Hospital.
The White Bison?
Hand of August.
I got to rub it in.
It's the White Buffalo. But we actually, what we're waiting on now is air conditioning because it's just too hot to be in there during the day.
Yeah.
So, once we get that installed, we should be opening up shortly.
If anybody hasn't, if you haven't walked by there in a day or two, I walked by there today. Oh my God, it looks like you're in an antique store. It is beautiful table set up with linens and dresses and china and all this really cool stuff. It's going to be great.
We've had a lot of volunteers spend a lot of time organizing it and getting it into place, and we're greatly appreciative of the island company for giving us that location. It gives us more room in order to display things. It was amazing how much stuff was packed into the old building.
Oh, right. Oh, yeah. Anyway, it looks great. Yeah. Katrina and Dave and whoever else have been working on it. Okay. No more oral communication? Let's go to the consent calendar.
We have eight items on the consent calendar this evening. The first one is minutes from the July 16, 2019 regular city council meeting. There are warrants from the period of July 6 through July 26 for a total disbursement Item three is to adopt the resolution designating a voting delegate at our next League of California Cities Conference, and that's appointing Mayor Annie Marshall and Council Member Ole Olson as the alternate voting delegate. Number four is just to adopt a resolution to opt out of the congestion management program. That is, number five is to appoint the mayor pro tem, McGugan Cassidy, and Council Member Hayes to serve as the ad hoc committee for a period of 12 months to develop revenue-generating ideas for the city of Avalon. And I did want to clarify, just from Rock's comment, that that isn't just you two. It was working with staff. It was working with whatever public wanted to be on that committee. Number six is to make the finding that the city will not gain a competitive advantage by using the formal bid, contract bid, or other competitive procedure, and ratify prior actions of the city manager and authorizing a one-year contract extension to complete the original scope of work without any change in the compensation. And I do want to stress that there was no additional money being added to that contract. It's just extending the term. Number seven is to review the request proposals to provide admissions, tax, audit services for the city of Avalon and authorize staff to advertise and solicit proposals. That is the mayor's long-awaited RFP going out. Number eight is to authorize city staff to develop a request for proposal and solicit proposals to qualified firms to develop... proposals to qualified firms to develop revised sanitary sewer overflow protection plan, the sewer system management plan, the system evaluation and capacity assurance plan, and the 2019 capital improvement plan for the city's sewer system. And that is all due to our seasoned assist.
I would like to pull item five.
Yeah.
And then, I don't know how you'll feel about the others.
I will then make a motion for items one through eight minus number five to approve.
Second.
McGugan seconded. Comments? Call for the vote.
Four ayes. Excellent.
All right, item number five, did you want to talk, start, Stevie? Steve, I'm sorry.
Well, on item number five, I think Denise kind of clarified it, um, the intent was to have two council members on there as well as community members, city staff, uh, chamber, any, any other entities that wanted to be involved, the, the more people we have, the better ideas we're gonna have. So I think it's an open, um, committee to, and I don't know how we're proceeding with that to get people, but...
I, I, I want to make certain that what you're doing is you're appointing, the agenda item is to appoint an ad hoc committee of two council members for the next year to work with what, whoever else wants to do it, but the, you're all, the committee that you're forming is just the council members, then that, those two, they can arrange meetings with the public, with individuals, with stakeholders, it's up to them to decide, but you're not appointing anyone else to the committee because then that becomes...
Correct.
A, a, a Brown Act. Uh, that becomes a city committee. But if you do the two councils, then they can go ahead and they can decide when they're gonna meet, who they're gonna meet with, they can have community meetings, et cetera, et cetera, on this issue. So it would just be, all you're doing is you're setting, who do you want to work with the community?
Okay. Um, I just want to make a comment before that. I think that's all wonderful, but, but when we got out of that, um, income generating meeting, there was a discussion, kind of a, nothing seemed really resolved to me in that meeting. Um, but one of the things that seemed like there was consensus, but we didn't vote on it, was that we didn't, correct me if I'm wrong, we didn't want to increase the TOT. I think some people said, you know, it's already a burden on the hotels and, I mean, I think that's a consensus, but I would like to entertain a discussion of reducing their TOT perhaps a little bit where the city gets more of that money.
You mean, reducing the percentage that goes...
Reducing the 12% to something other than that. And so I would like Matt to take a peek at that if, if we want to at least entertain it.
Okay.
Because I know we, you know, we talked about, I think we talked about, we didn't want to increase sales tax, I don't remember how we, if we resolved that, you know, and all of the things we don't want to increase, so, um, and I know that some of my constituents are like, and I'm not slamming your gym, but you know, people say, you know, we give them a heck of a lot of money. So I think, I think that dialogue is good, me representing perhaps some of those people that think maybe that's another way for us to get money in our coffers.
But I would just remind us that the TOT increase for the chamber was voted on in election.
And this would have to be...
Voted on in election, then two.
Exactly. Exactly. So that's why I would like to have the discussion sooner than later, so if we need to put it on the agenda in, uh, March, we, it can be there.
Yeah. I think we have to decide in early October if we want to put it on in March.
October 24th.
Dead night is October 24th, for any initiative to be on the ballot.
So I think that'll bring people out to talk, so... Okay. All right, so is there a motion on item five?
Staff on five.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Call for the vote.
Four ayes.
And now we're going into the housing authority.
Correct. Okay, um, this item discusses, um, the additional housing development at the 206 East Whitley site. If you recall, on July 16th, um, you approved the plans for the remodel of the existing of four units there. Currently on the site, there's the four-unit building, which you see shaded in at the top, that's the footprint of the four-unit building, and then there's an existing cottage that's also shaded in the far bottom corner, and that we determined that was beyond help as far as it would have been too costly to remodel. So that's why we're saying that that was a tear down. So, um, the proposal is, is that we would look at potentially replacing that, one that we're tearing down and an additional four units, that would hit us the max, uh, development that would be allowed on that site. Um, so, uh, what we're asking, and it's in the budget, it's in the current budget, but we think that we could, for about $10,000, lay out a site plan, uh, look at the feasibility, um, put some numbers together, pro forma of what this could do for us, okay? And so it's, um, different than what we're doing in phase one, we're moving ahead with phase one.
Card.
Trying to get the RFP together to get that out so that we can get it out to bid. This is what we're calling phase two, and so we're in front of you right now asking, um, do we want to move forward with this?
So I have a question, who would be doing the, the, uh, the plan?
Um, so it would be Camison Keller, the same architect.
Okay. You don't have to go out to bid if it's only like 10 grand.
This, whether our on-call consultant, he's our on-call architect, and he had already put, you saw the quality of work that he put together when he put the, uh, improvement plans together.
The, the only thing that I would like to request is to hold this off. We may be having something in closed session about another piece of property that I would like us to talk about, so if we could hold off this...
Okay.
I would appreciate that.
And, and really what the intent was is just to, I guess, put this as a possible alternative, so when we're discussing properties, so that we know what we, if we did have another five units there, what, um, our pro forma would look like for it. So that's really what this step in the process is.
Okay, well, and then in light of the comment that Rock Goslin made about that property altogether, uh, you know, I don't know, do we want to, do we want to hash this a little, little bit more and look at what may come up in the next?
No. I mean, from my perspective, no, and, and this has nothing to do with, with Bob specifically, but, I, I mean, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say yes to doing anything else until we get this project up and running and get it rented to people. I mean, no, no more. Staff time should be spent solely on getting that project done and getting renters in there. And I'm just, you know, we keep spending money, we keep spending money, the longer we wait to do things, the more it costs to do everything, and I just, we've been sitting on this property, now you want to talk about another new property, and, and, and I appreciate, you know, constantly looking at new ideas and whatnot, but it doesn't make any sense. We have done nothing with the property that we've had. I just want to get it rented.
It was on the market for a long time, we never got any reasonable offers. So it's valuable piece of property, Rock thinks it is, the real estate market doesn't think it's that's valuable.
Right. No, I appreciate that, too. I, I mean, I want to do some great things, Bob, but I really want to get this property rented.
So, we, you know our schedule to get, you know, it's gonna be in the fall, that we're actually, you know, as we get to the end of fall here, we're gonna be remodeling that, and that was part of our discussion, that we wanted to do it during the off-season, okay, so that we could get the cheapest bids for it, so that we could house whoever was gonna be, um, at least, uh, a portion of the crew would be from the mainland, okay? So we could try to get, you know, good prices on that. And on this one, it was just, it takes a year and a half, two years to get to a point where we'd be finished with a second phase of this. So at some point, you got to start, and so we're just saying it's a start, take a look, and then we may say, "No, it's not feasible," but it's just the feasibility, it's not the full development of the project, and even if it was full development, hey, you can put it out with housing funds out for somebody else to create that project and build it. But it's really, do you want to take a look at it, because at some point, the state's gonna come to us and say, "What have you done with your low mod funds?"
Right.
You know, and so we have moved forward with remodeling, we have a schedule, what have you done next? You know, well, here's a, a potential plan, and then, you know, so we're just looking at all our alternatives. So that's really the way we brought it forward.
No, I understand, I mean, and I kind of agree with what Cindy is, but I would at least like to hold it off until we at least, because we haven't had that dialogue as of, as this, with this council about where we want to go with housing and how we actually do want to approach it. I mean, we know what we've done before with the Island Company and with the, the big developer, but, um, um, I don't want to move on this today.
Can we just hold it over? So it's still an item on the agenda and it can...
Right. Or the thing we could say is, "Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna designate $10,000 of our budget to do that, but not until we tell you when." And if we never do, we never do, so then he wouldn't have to come back to us. No?
But you'd still have to come back to tell him when.
When, okay, so never mind. We're holding it over.
But I, I see your point, and I appreciate that clarification.
Okay.
Let me just...
Thank you.
Throw you that.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we will be going to closed session.
Hospital first.
Oh my goodness, my goodness, my goodness, I thought I was gonna make it through. Okay. Uh, sorry, Ollie.
No, it's okay, Annie. I had a problem. I'd like to call to order the, what the dates at the...
Six.
August 6th, um, 2019 hospital committee, you know, hospital board meeting. Could we have a rule call?
Trustee Hayes?
Here.
Trustee Marshall?
Here.
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Chairman Olson?
Here. Any announcements?
I have none or written communications.
No written communications, any presentations? None it says. Consent calendar.
There's only two items on the consent calendar, it's minutes from the July 16, 2019 hospital board of trustees meeting, and the second one is to recommend the two additional members to sit on the board of directors of the Avalon Medical Development Corporation with terms ending June 30th of 2022. There was two applications enclosed in, in your packets.
I'm sorry, I have to back up, I forgot oral communications. Oral communications, member of the public may address the Avalon Municipal Board, Hospital Board of Trustees at this time, no action will be taken nor appro, nor agenda, no action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting. Speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Anybody want to make a, oh, we have, we have one! All right!
What?
First, first one?
Wow!
Jesus.
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. I'm just curious, since Jason's here, where the hospital is with repaying the money that they owe the city, and I'd like to update on that, thank you.
We will get updates the next meeting. You can update us now?
Is that a state, true statement?
What?
There's a revolving loan.
A loan.
Oh, okay, hi, Jason.
Yeah, we, we continue, we do make our interest payments, as we're supposed to, but, uh, what we will be doing, what we're doing right now is focusing on amassing then a large enough amount of cash that we can pay it back. Since we, over a year ago, about a year ago, we had less than $200,000 cash in the bank, and now we have over a million dollars, and we want to get that up a little bit more before we do the payoff.
Okay.
Rainy day fund.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Now we will go down to the consent calendar, sorry. Uh, we have two items on the consent calendar, remember, want to remove one?
No, still move.
Still move.
Second.
Second. Members of the public want to discuss any of the consent calendar? Hearing none, call for question? We will adjourn.
No, we don't have to point those two people to the bar.
We did that.
We just did it.
Oh, that was all in consent.
It was all in consent.
And we got to at least see their names. Okay, good. Rock and roll. Okay, good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.
Yep. We have two closed sessions, public employee performance evaluation, city manager in conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation, 10 items, we're not going in a closed session on number two, threatened litigation.
I think I have to have him give it a flag or something. Yeah, because man, I can't see.
No, he's, I can see him there.
Okay, and we're back from closed session?
No report of action.
Thank you. Again, Tony, good night.
Hi, Tony.
Meeting adjourned.